Good evening. Thank you for being here. I call to order the Morrisville Town Council Work Session for October 16th, 2018. We're going to be discussing Town Council Community-Wide Visioning Work Session. I'm going to turn it over to Brad West, Planner 2, and Nick Davis from the consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the second Town Council Work Session for the Land Use Plan Update. We're going to start with the presentation from House Levine on the Existing Conditions Report and Trends and Influences Summary, and you should have received a hard copy of that at the last council meeting. We are then going to take about 10 minutes, tops, for questions about those two documents. We've also provided you with a pen and pad, so if you have any other questions, please jot them down. If we don't get to them in that 10-minute timeframe, we will be happy to grab those from you and respond at a later time. We will then get into the actual work session activity, the community-wide visioning activity, and House Levine will explain that in more detail after the presentation. So, without further ado, please welcome Nick Davis from House Levine.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for giving us the opportunity. We're going to go through a couple of different things tonight. Let me jump ahead. Again, to reintroduce myself, I'm Nick Davis. I'm a principal at House Levine. With me is Paul Finn, one of the primary authors of both the Existing Conditions Report, also the Trends and Issues document that we're going to go through. The last component of what we want to do tonight is a visioning exercise, so we're going to give you kind of a project overview. We're going to talk about that Existing Conditions Report, Trends and Influences Summary, visioning exercise, and then we're going to talk about next steps. When we go through the ECR and the Trends and Issues document, our goal here is to just kind of give you a high-level rundown of what we identified, what we've seen as we started to prepare these two documents. We're going to leave a little bit of time for questions. The bulk of tonight, though, we really want to focus on this visioning exercise. Brad handed out some notepads, so if we're not able to get to everybody's questions or we can't answer them, as it relates to the ECR and the Trends and Issues document, certainly write down those questions, turn those into staff if we can't answer them or staff can't answer them. We'll reach out with any additional questions. But again, the main theme of tonight is this visioning exercise, so we're excited to get into that. So the first part of tonight is a project overview, just kind of giving you a snapshot of where we're at today and what it took to get here and where we're going, you know, after tonight. So the first part, there was a project initiation that was made up of a lot of different initiation meetings with staff. We started the process of identifying how we're going to do the outreach, which is the next phase. You know, we started the preliminary reconnaissance. Phase, and that's complete, that task is complete. Phase 2, also complete, was outreach and community engagement, a series of different approaches to how we wanted to do community outreach, how we wanted to, you know, get connected with the business owners, the property owners. So we had a project website set up. We did community open houses and/or community, kind of like a kickoff project initiation. We also met with town council. We've met with staff repeatedly. We also started doing key stakeholder interviews. Those included individual one-on-one interviews. We had focus groups where multiple people sat in. So it was quite an effort to get all these different people at all these different times to tell us what they think the key issues are, what they think some of those opportunities might be. We're going to talk a little bit about that later on, a couple of slides. The community visioning and goals section, that's really where we're at right now. So that's going to include us starting to think about, you know, we've done the Existing Conditions Report, we've done that planning document, or I'm sorry, the Trends document. Now we're starting to move into the plan-making phase. We have still not drafted any plan recommendations, so far everything that you've seen up to this point is a documentation of existing conditions, existing issues, those that were identified by other people, those that we've seen just based on our experience. From really today moving forward, we're starting to move into this plan-making phase, and you're going to help us establish the direction of that. And we're also going to do some additional community workshops. We're going to do some, you know, additional feedback points on the project website. It's going to be a big part of the process. Phase 5, Sub Area Plans, also something that we're just starting to get into, you know, defining what those boundaries might be, you know, what are some of the issues that we want to look at? Ultimately, what do we want to achieve in those sub-area plans? That's a big part of what we'll be doing through the fall and into early winter. And then the community-wide plans and policies will be informed by the foundation of recommendations that we receive from the public, everything that we've really compiled through the ECR and Trends and Issues document, and how we start moving forward is really starting today. And then the last bit is the plan document and adoption, and it's taking all these plan recommendations, policies, implementation strategies, and formulating this into one cohesive, clear direction of a plan. And that, again, is going to go out in front of the public. We'll be back in front of this group, I'm sure, a couple of times, and it'll be a vetted process. So people will have an opportunity throughout, you know, the next three steps to provide their feedback, provide their input, and make sure, you know, we're ultimately delivering the plan we want to deliver. So Part 2, the Existing Conditions Report, Trends and Influences Summary Memorandum. As I had mentioned, the community engagement, just at the initiation of this project, we've talked to 360 or 376 people individually, in person. We've had 294 online survey responses, which is a really good number and one that you should be proud of. Unique visits to the project website, 908, so not only are people participating, but they're seeing what's happening. They know what meetings are coming up. They know when they need to check in or what they need to be following. We have an online mapping tool that allows you to create points, lines, polygons, anything to really convey to us what they think the key issues are. We've got 173 unique points, and we've had 18 in-person outreach events held, which is also a very large number of different events. The Existing Conditions Report, some of the main things that came out of, themes that came out of that report were education was definitely something that we heard from multiple groups, traffic congestion was something that we heard from quite a few different representatives, community residents, business owners, that type of, those types of groups, access and connectivity, image and identity, community spaces, and rapid growth. So these are some of the big themes that were established throughout the outreach process and those that we want to continue to think about as we move forward. The Existing Conditions Report has a market and demographics section built into it, and it gives a clear understanding of kind of where Morrisville is today, helps us understand where it could be in the future. So total employment, right now you're looking at somewhere between, well, back in 2002, you were at 12,000. As of the most recent numbers, you're up close, almost to 25,000 employed people in Morrisville. The population change, a significant population change from 1990, went from basically 1,400 people projected to 2023 to be a little over 35,000 people, and that trend is continuing to go up. The distribution of population, non-white population, a majority of the census tracts in Morrisville are highly diverse. You see this through multiple different races, multiple different groups in Morrisville, the breakout. You can see on the map on the right that, I don't know if you can see that, but 51% to 65% are non-white in those large yellow areas. So a pretty unique breakout of the population here in Morrisville. The Existing Land Use Summary, we did a very thorough reconnaissance of the community, so we took existing data but still drove virtually every street in Morrisville. Paul can attest to that or attest to that. But really trying to assess what the existing land uses are, so we had a criteria that we set up. We identified every use parcel by parcel, and you have 14 different land uses that make up really the town of Morrisville. Obviously, single-family is one of the largest at 21%, but you have 17%, which is a substantial number. 17% of Morrisville is undeveloped right now. But there's also some other breakouts. You have parks and rec at 10%, single-family attached is 3.6%, industrial 12.72%. And then the second document, and I don't know if you have these in front of you, but the second document is that Trends and Influences document. And really what this one is too, is it's starting to identify some of the issues, the opportunities, you know, maybe flagging some of the constraints as well, but it gives us a sense of, as we start moving forward into this plan document, into this plan phase, you can start to see the structure of the plan because it's going to try to resolve some of these issues. It's going to address these issues. You know, adjacent municipalities, how do you take into consideration the communities around you that are growing, that impact, the developments that are here in Morrisville? You know, you can identify when it started to influence development that's already here and in the future. How is it going to impact the decisions that need to be made here and how what we do here impacts other communities? Land availability, certainly some rapid growth. Having a coordinated land use plan is critical. This is a big step for the town in identifying what it wants to see happen over the next 10, 20, 30 years. The Raleigh-Durham International Airport, certainly a major impact and both a benefit but also provide some challenges about what kinds of developments can happen here, where developments can happen, and, you know, ultimately what those might build out and look like. The last one is housing affordability, certainly an issue that we've heard, really not just unique to Morrisville but one that in this region is an issue that's being addressed. The Raleigh-Durham Airport, something that we talked about, the runway configurations, the flight patterns that cross directly over Morrisville do create some challenges. There's the overlay district, how we address that, and really helping us to, I think, target the types of uses that we think are appropriate in these areas based on what's available, what's there now, and ultimately the direction that we hear from the community and even you tonight. Also in the Trends and Influences, we identify environmental features and open space. There's a significant loss of green space based on some of the development that's happened over the years. There's impacts to the waterways, multi-use paths, private parks, recreation, and open space. These are all components that, you know, are something that are, that can be unique to a community but need to be planned for. So we identify these as some of the issues that we need to be tracking as we start moving into the plan-making phase. Loss of green space, as I mentioned. During the community outreach, residents consistently voiced this as a real concern. And moving forward, growth has to reduce its impact, both on the natural environment but also on the wildlife within Morrisville. I think, you know, you hear people talk a lot about the trees, the canopies, but there's also that wildlife component, and it's something that needs to be considered when we start drafting some of these plans and recommendations. The community facilities and infrastructure, I had mentioned education was an issue that was brought up multiple times, you know, making roadway extensions, how pedestrians are moving through the town, some of that shared infrastructure, both in cost but also in implementation, and then just additional facilities. What can be done to either enhance some of the facilities that are here or add some that aren't currently? Education, based on the growth projections, it appears likely the town will continue to impact the Wade County Public School System. Coordination with the WCPSS regarding new facility opportunities is a critical element of the planning process, one that's already started but will continue to do as we work through drafting the plan. Image and identity, branding is a big component of ultimately what this plan's going to need to achieve. You know, branding a community, establishing a community focal point, historic Morrisville crossroads, gateway entrances, landscaping and site design will definitely be addressed as we move forward. A community focal point was something that's been described in many different ways by residents and business owners, you know, that creation of a community focal point as a public amenity and as also that part of that town's identity is critical. Okay, so the next, well, any questions before we move forward?
Councilmember Garamella and then Councilmember Wendell, please.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I had a question when, one of the graphs you said the employment is around 25,000 people, right? Does that include, we have a population of 28,000, that was the last that we know.
2015.
28,000. So does it, I'm trying to understand the split here because Courtney tried to explain last time was we get 10,000 jobs from outside, like work in Morrisville. So trying to understand, this 23,000, does it include the jobs coming from outside or how does it work?
In the Existing Conditions Report, there is, I think you're talking about like inflow-outflow?
Yeah. Trying, how would I interpret this graph? Like, a population of 28,000 and we say it's 23,000 work in Morrisville, does it mean that there are residents of Morrisville who work or?
Yeah, so that's a fair question. So in the ECR, on page 28, you have 22,000 people that are employed in Morrisville and live outside of Morrisville. You have 1,000 people, just a little over 1,000 people, that are employed and live in Morrisville. And then 10, sorry, page 28, and then 10,000 people live in Morrisville and are employed outside of Morrisville. So that inflow-outflow graphic. So it gives you a sense of where people are coming from in terms of where they're working and where they live.
Technically, I can say, so we have a population of Morrisville residents who safely say is around 10,000 minus. 28,000, right? Is that how I interpret it?
Yeah, I think so. You have 1,000 people that live and work here, and then you have an additional 10,000 people that are employed outside but they live in Morrisville. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And the second question is, the adjacent municipalities, you just touched on that. Do you plan to cover more about it in one of the slides?
Oh, here, I'll go to it.
Yeah, the land use. So, Addison, what do you mean by that? Like, will you review the adjacent municipalities of how they're doing the land use and sync up ours with them?
That's one component of it, yes. So we'll continue to be in coordination with those communities that are around us, be it Durham, Raleigh, Cary, even the RTP, and just make sure that we understand what they're planning for, but also making them aware of what ultimately we'll start planning for. So there's got to be that kind of joint venture, joint coordination, but there's also the making people aware of the land that's available to Morrisville and what can be planned. Again, talking about 17%, just 17% of that's undeveloped now, let alone uses that maybe in the future might become a different use. So that's something we'll be coordinating with them on.
And coming, touching on the 17% undeveloped, I'm trying to understand more granularity, like we hear, like you said, 1,400 acres is still not developed, right? 1,400 acres is under the airport overlay.
Correct.
That's, okay. So out of that, how much is developed and how much is not? Because our new thing which will come, it's 400 acres, I know that part that we have heard, but how much of that are we looking at? Because when people, I continuously hear is, where's land for development?
Sure. So that 17% makes up, it's essentially 900 acres of land that's available. So I think you're asking, just so I'm clear.
Yeah, in that 900 acres, right? Like, how much is in the airport overlay?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head, but that is something that we could easily identify. That's a good question.
Okay. And we talk about deforestation and, as in one of the slides. Define that, because I'm trying to struggle when we have in our UDO 30% and then open spaces, right? Then it's, you use the land use and then try to understand the open space and green space, and then talk about, you know, people concerned about deforestation. So how does that work in, in the whole overall land use plan? You know, like, are there, because to my understanding, if I might be nary in this, but it's parks, green spaces, and the buffer areas around the stream, it's considered, you know, those areas are by code that we cannot do anything in those areas. So what are, what do you mean by deforestation at that time?
I think it just means the general loss of tree canopies, be it, you know, if you want to say, like vegetation. So not just trees but also understory, under critical sensitive areas. And I know that that's something that can be controlled through regulation, and it may already be, but it's just something to keep in mind as we start planning these large swaths of land. Currently, they're vegetated and they are perceived to be woodlands, and even though they may not be public open space, it is something that makes up kind of the overall view of what is Morrisville, what it was, you know, traditionally and the direction that it's going. So it's just something to keep in mind. It's not to say that development can't happen but that it should respect what's there now and do what it can to preserve it. So I do want to say we wanted to keep this pretty quick and I want to allow other people an opportunity to ask questions. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Councilmember Wendell, then Schlink, and then Johnson.
Thank you, Nick, right?
Correct.
Thanks, Nick. Of the 17.31 undeveloped land, do you have a slide in the future? Do we know how much of that is topographically viable for development?
That's a great question. So right now, we've not done that level of assessment, but as we start moving forward and, because again, we've not done any plan-making, we've not done any recommendations of the top, but as we start thinking about, boy, should this be this type of use based on what we're hearing, one of the first things we're going to need to do is using some of the contours that exist to us now, just run an analysis and based on the slope, is it 12%, 15%, 5%, whatever that might be, and give it an assessment and say that that's a viable redevelopment site or this is going to have some significant challenges. We need to be respectful of, it's easy to make it purple, we'll just make it industrial, and it's like, well, you can only develop 2% of that site or 50% of that site. So that's definitely a big part of our next step. That's a good question.
And then one other question, this may or may not. Of the population growth that we're anticipating this 10,000 increase, is there any estimation of how many on that 10,000 increase would be school-age children versus adults? Do we have any kind of way we're going to measure that or try to take a guess at it or?
Yeah, also, that's another good question. Honestly, I don't know if that's something that we can easily assess. There are national calculators that we can apply to some of these projections, but that might be something we could dig into, the data sets that we're pulling this information from. We're not just taking it from one source, it's multiple, so somewhere in there, there may be a variable that we can pull out and say, you know, the average, maybe something more than just a blanket number to 10,000. Maybe we can start to project, based on that information given to us, what that might look like. Yeah, something to consider.
Yeah, and the very last thing is actually kind of simple. With regard to deforestation, you know, I went to college in Oregon and you go up I-5 and the trees look beautiful. You go 20 yards in and there's no trees.
Sure.
So it looks like forest but it really isn't, and so it really affects the ecosystems of the animals here.
Yeah.
When, will you make recommendations based on, through either the Sierra Club or somewhere, if there are certain areas within Morrisville that are ecosystems to a unique, you know, bioscience or a certain animal population or something like that, just so we can make sure that, I would like to know if there's an area that we kind of need to protect, whether it's, you know, endangered or semi-endangered or it's, you know, an only place that a certain animal lives, because we can have two lines of trees but that doesn't make the ecosystem.
Yeah.
You know, we need a little bit more.
They could be rag trees. I mean, sometimes people see a grove of trees and think that they're critical to an environment. They may not be. They may actually be, they may not be native. They might be an invasive species. So that's something we can look at, but I want to say this, we're not recommending anything yet. That's a big part of what you're going to tell us tonight. You're going to tell us if we should incorporate that kind of study or that kind of information into the plans recommendations. I think if enough people say it, and I imagine we will, that'll be something we'll look at. So, okay, I know, I'm trying to keep us tight on the time here, so if there are any additional questions, let's jot them down on those notepads. No? Can we do, okay. But can we, let's try to keep it, because I really do want to get into the visioning session. It's a big part of what we want to accomplish tonight, but go ahead.
Okay, so the public input, again, these are general things. It's not for debate so much as just input, but I appreciate us and I think that's a strength that I've witnessed, that we're going ahead and we're asking the public what we want, but the trouble is, I don't think the public knows what they want. To a certain extent, I think part of it is education. I was on the last committee 10 years ago as a public, as a citizen, and I think that was very helpful. The other thing I would say is, so I look at you guys to be able to do that, and I'd also like to give them strategies so they could recommend, recommendations to us what they want versus us top-down telling them what to do.
Yeah.
Because what I'm hearing, and I think you're going to hear it tonight from other councilmembers, is slow growth. So, and then I'll lead to a few other questions on that. Your demographics, I just don't think that we're going to go to 36,000 people. I don't know where in the heck we'd put them. You know, we don't have that much land unless we open it up and we start allowing apartment complexes on every, on every corner. But I just don't know. So I think realistically, I think as your market research, what you looked at, if you look at where you think these 10,000 people are going to go, I think that'd be helpful to help the public understand that maybe it isn't going to be that way.
And those are two, obviously, two very different things. There's the projection of what Morrisville could grow into.
Sure.
And a big part of what we're talking about through this plan is we can help shape where they may go or we can help determine whether or not we think, that's how growth should occur.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, okay, so show me, because the zoning, it doesn't allow for certain things. If you're allowing for single-family, you can only get so many if you're allowing for apartments.
Oh, sure, yep.
I just have trouble envisioning where 10,000 would be if even with the TOD, around the TOD and that's 100 acres. Okay? And then I wish you'd tighten up some of the language, relook at some of the language in there, and I'll give you some, later on, I'll give you some.
That'd be great.
But it's been updated. And then I would look at, I had a question about, on page 11, you say, "As Morrisville moves into the newer of growth, however careful management of future investment, all critical, will be critical ensuring growth in the best interests of Morrisville and dictated by the needs and desires of Morrisville residents, not adjacent municipalities or regional neighborhoods." I think that needs to be looked at in examples because we talk about collaboration, we talk about schools, we have no control over that.
Sure.
We have to work with these people, and you're telling us, I don't know, I would say a good example of what you're talking about might be 147, where in the past, previous councils had said, "Look, we're going to have to work with a toll road connection at McCrimmons, and we've since decided to take it to Davis Drive because we don't want any more pass-through traffic." And that's, again, just for your kind of a comment edification. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. All right, I think unless there's.
Yeah, we're going to stop. Maybe we got one more question and that is, that is, we're going to have to cut you off there, unfortunately.
[inaudible].
Yeah. If you do have a question, please jot it down. I promise we will get back to you afterwards.
Okay. All right, thanks. So the next thing we want to do is start the planning exercise. So you should all have some sheets in front of you. It'll say Section 1 on the top, so let's just make sure everybody can get to that first. And then we just, I want to make it very clear, when we identified these areas, it is purely by the geographical boundaries, some of the edges that define them. That is the only thing that really we use to define them, just so we could kind of bite these off in chunks as we move through the different areas. So you have a color code at 11 by 17 that'll help kind of guide each section that we're talking about. So does everybody have theirs?
So the first question you guys can start doing is now is what some of the strengths and assets are in this area of Morrisville. So looking at the number one, the area up in the north or left side. Oh, yeah, can we pull that up on the screen? Why is it there?
Or do you?
Yep.
Do you have those in it?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to give you just a few minutes. We're going to get a few minutes to each one of these questions. So the first one they're doing for the area number one, what are some of the strengths and assets in the area of Morrisville, in this area? Now, let's not jump ahead quite yet. So I'll watch, once I see pens down, then we'll move on to the next question.
Could we just, from my understanding, you just say a few of the neighborhoods because these are kind of small for us to read?
Oh, okay.
If Courtney or, you know, Brad could kind of say, okay, one has got Kits Creek, blah, 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 and that'll trigger us to kind of know what we're looking at?
That's fair. And then there's also some large format.
Yeah, we have a large map here, too.
That's a good question. Okay. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, so Section 1 includes the neighborhoods of Kits Creek, Providence Place, Breckenridge. You can see Town Hall North aerial here.
Oh, that's helpful.
And, yeah.
Yep. Yes, a geographic reference definitely helps people. And keep in mind, we are going to collect these sheets at the end, so.
We gave three grades.
We are going to grade it both on your print and the comments that you provide, so you don't need to put your name at the top. Okay, and then the second question is, what are some of the challenges or weaknesses in this area of Morrisville? If you have any questions, let us know. If you have any questions, let us know. Yep, and then we can move on to question 3. The last question for this area, if any, what are some of the opportunities for improvement or redevelopment in this area? All right, now we're going to put you on the spot for this last question. We're going to go around the table. And if there's a comment you want to share, feel free. Let us know what you think some of the opportunities for improvement or redevelopment are. So let you think about that. And we'll start in a minute or two. Well, now you're going first.
You want on any of these?
You can keep writing. We're going to go around the table, though, so feel free.
On any of these questions?
Uh, we were primarily the last one.
Okay, the last one, it's the opportunity for commuter rail station and transit-oriented design.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Garmel, you guys can just weigh in on this one.
Yeah, pretty much, as a TOD train station, and primarily also the Church Street intersection improvements near the MacRamen and Church Street. Now, it's because I see a traffic clog around that areas. So how we can flush the traffic.
Okay, great. Yeah, and if you find, if you have a comment that's very similar to someone else, and you have some other idea, great. If someone nailed your comment, we can just move on to the next comment. Go ahead, sir.
So I think, for the most part, there's, you know, there's limited opportunity for, you know, redevelopment, per se. I think connectivity for this area is going to be very, very important. In the, at the far end, in the Kits Creek area, there's no Greenway connection to get, like, from Kits Creek into Providence Place. So that whole 800-home area is sort of cut off. So I think that the connectivity is definitely an area that can be improvement. As you go down, one of the things that I think we need to really focus on with the TOD and the railway, which is all going to be phenomenal for our town, is additional connectivity for not only access, but also egress to that area. We have, with the additional development stuff along the Church Street corridor there. So I think there's some opportunity to just try to improve somehow, hopefully, some of the traffic flow and the access and egress to that area.
That's great.
For the future. So when I look at what it's going to look like five years from now, when we build the downtown and all of that, you know, how do we get people in and out?
That's great. You wrote all of that? I'm impressed. Sure had. Yeah, oh, it's good.
So we need an A and a B version, because I don't want him copying.
Exactly.
No, I thought we have an opportunity for affordable housing and transit. Right now, we have a lot of single-family homes, and that seems to be a gap in that area.
Okay, thanks. Do you have one?
Sure. I also agree with the Greenway. I had that down for Kits Creek and Breckenridge, actually. Technically, they have some on Davis. I put down Church Street, limited to two lanes. I think that's a liability. One of the things that I thought was maybe a strength was there's still land that borders RTP we can work with to get future schooling needs, because we've already had two. There's another one up there we could get a high school.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry I was late today. Thank you for being here. My number one priority for improvement in this area is, was Greenway connectivity between Kit Creek and Providence. I've been seeing that for years. Those are two of our largest neighborhoods, and it could be really nice for people to connect in between. Then I had TOD, community rail station. And then this could go for all of them, but just to the extent possible, just more open space, which, you know, I think all across Morrisville. So looking at the 17% of undeveloped land, you know, to the extent that we can increase the amount that we're going to save for just open space, just in all areas of Morrisville.
Okay, no, it's good. Thank you. Well, good, you're starting to see some themes where people are saying the same things, or different ideas, different approaches. That's helpful.
And I'd just add on to Councilmember Rowe's comments. Right near Cricket, Pitchway, and our Church Street Park, there's a lot of forested area that remains. And if we're intentional about preserving that or turning it into, into parks, that'd be an interesting way to do it.
Okay, yeah, and that's a great comment. Make sure we're writing that down. I want to make sure that that's added, because that's kind of to the point of the question that was asked before, is what steps can we take to preserve that?
All right, it looks like.
All right, so number 2, and that was good, too, because you kind of get the theme of, maybe there wasn't a lot of redevelopment opportunities in the first area, but there were improvements that still could be made. You know, and then there may be some other areas where it's mostly about redevelopment, and it may not. So, okay, so we're going to do, you're going to start to get the rhythm here. We're going to do a very similar set of questions for Area 2.
This is the area with the Airport Outlet Mall, the Perimeter Park Office Development, like, the Walmart and Sam's Club.
Are you all collecting as we go, or?
Well, at the end.
Yeah, we'll get them all at the end.
Keep them organized as much as possible. We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you for the explanation.
All right, so same question for Area Number 2 right off the bat. What are some strengths and assets in this area of Morrisville?
Tell me what area was.
Oh, Area 2. Go ahead.
Near the Airport Outlet Mall, Perimeter Park Office Development, Airport Boulevard.
Yes, that is near the Perimeter Park Office Development. And since people are already jumping ahead, go ahead and start on Number 2. What are some challenges or weaknesses in this area of Morrisville? All right, and then the last question, if any, what are some opportunities for improvement or redevelopment in this area? This time, we'll start on the other end of the table. Yeah?
Well. I think a great opportunity for redevelopment is the Factory Outlet Mall. And I know we've been talking about that for years, but I think that's a great opportunity for us to have sort of more of a mix, depending on what they do with that property, a mixed-use type of environment. I know we're restricted with multifamily, but I think something like what Durham has, you know, like the tobacco campus, where you have, like, incubation for entrepreneurs. And I think that would actually help redevelop a lot of that part of Airport Boulevard, because we have a lot there, but it's still, it's a little stale. It hasn't been redeveloped in a long time. So I really think that that's a great opportunity. And then I'd like to see more greenways and potential parks in that area.
Okay.
Because there's not really a lot close to there.
Do you see a spot geographically that you think is the most appropriate for that? Or do you mean it more so as, just in general, as redevelopment occurs?
And just as redevelopment occurs. To the extent that we could have a developer invest. I mean, there's not a lot of room there for that. But, you know, just, you know, I just think, you know, having more greenways and, you know, maybe, you know, just around that, you know, whole quadrant near the Airport Mall and just around, where people could walk. And maybe within that mall area, if they could dedicate a certain amount of just space, you know, right now, but there's a lot of impervious surface because it's all just parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Thanks.
TOD, there's 25 to 50 acres on those. There's four quadrants around the TOD, so we've identified one, that these are 2 and 3. Airport noise overlay, I looked as a challenge or weakness, because then we're limiting ourselves to commercial. I think at some point, we're back to population. If you're not going to have any population in there, then, you know, no homeownership, which is, I think, is a detriment to the town.
Yeah.
I think around the mall, you could, and we've talked about it, but I think you could start to allow condos around there or something. You're going to need that in order to revitalize it. Development, it's been sitting idle for 15 years now, so. They're not going to do anything. It's got to be more like a North Hills.
Okay, thanks.
So I think this is one of the areas where there is opportunity for potential growth and development. I think the challenges of the airport overlay really need to be looked at with regard to housing of any kind. I mean, I would love to be able to have, you know, even have the potential for affordable housing, but I would hate to put housing in an area that is going to be detrimental because of noise. So I think we'd have to really look at what the decimal ratings are in certain areas. So I think that's going to be crucial when we're looking at what we could put anywhere. We, I like the idea potentially of potential space for a school, another sports venue or something, you know, in that area, I think could be nice, right off of I-40. And then the, from a downside, you know, as we get closer to Area 1, is, again, it's all about infrastructure. And there's not a whole lot of infrastructure in this quadrant. We would need to really take a look at flow patterns, especially anything that would dump back out onto Chapel Hill Road, because we're looking to not even have that completed or wind until 2030s. So if we were to do anything in the short term, just have to be aware of where that, where the traffic patterns are going to go.
Okay, yeah, those are good considerations. Any thoughts?
I'll say it, we need to expand 54.
Okay.
In Area 2, right where the 2 is, there seems to be a lot of green space there. As someone else mentioned, maybe some kind of park space. I wasn't really aware of that water body. I don't know how deep it is, or how much we, if we had some park near it, it'd be a way to put boats in the water, or make it some kind of amenity in the future. Also, there's Sam's Club, which is, I believe, currently vacant now. So that's an opportunity to revitalize that mall up there a little bit. And I think condos near the factory shops is kind of a strong thing to think about.
Okay.
Councilmember Schlink brought up.
The redevelopment, one thing is for sure that we know is the make way for the Triangle Bike Way, which is coming around the 40 corridor to that 2. That, and see how we can connect more of north-south, because where Shiloh Grove, it's like lower Shiloh Way, you know, connecting from the other side of the 540 to this side. Since we did not, I remember when we were working on the hotels and the apartment complexes there, there was no greenway or anything around that area. So how can we connect this side across 40, north-south?
Okay.
And make sure that area has more greenway connections. And perfect place for redevelopment of the Airport Mall and more hotels is good in that area.
All right, good, thanks.
So I'll just go on the redevelopment theme. Flex space and industrial needs to be redeveloped. I think if I had had the time to talk before, I would have said what I need is to understand the value, the land that we have developed, the revenue value that's associated with that developed land. Since we're landlocked, I think it's really important that we look at this whole process in the eyes of, what is the highest and best use of the remaining land that we have in Morrisville? Now, I'm not saying, you know, the highest and best use, I know it's like hotels and motels. I'm not saying we put a hotel motel on every corner, but I think it's important for us to understand the value of all the uses here in the town of Morrisville, and what that means to the properties that are undeveloped right now or that are ripe for redevelopment.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and certainly in kind of direct response, what I was saying, we're talking about that 17% that's undeveloped, but that doesn't mean that there aren't those other parcels that should also be considered when we start looking at highest and best use of those properties. So, yeah, definitely, definitely something that we'll be looking at.
So to that point, it would be really interesting to know what the percentage of properties that are ripe for redevelopment. Because it might be equal to that 17%, quite frankly.
Yeah, you're right.
It could be a lot more. That's right, because we didn't get to Section 4 yet. I'm going to do a repeat in Section 4.
You're jumping ahead. Oh, that's a good, that's a good point, though. I can't wait till we get to Section 4. All right, so Section, any other comments? Otherwise, let's move in. By the way, we're doing great on time, so let's keep this moving. So Area 3.
This is the Town Hall Commons neighborhood area. Also includes a big chunk of the town center area, in particular, the area that's receiving a library and a traffic circle, and also the Healthy Food Hub area, and a lot of the town core discussion.
So I can continue to read the questions to you? Or I think we know what we're doing. So, yeah. So feel free, I'll give you a couple minutes. We'll let everyone fill out all three questions, and then we'll zero in here on the last one. Is anybody ready to share? Number three? Yep. Want to lead us off?
So this is, you know, an area of, our downtown area. I think, you know, another strength that we have is it's the, you know, one of the major historic areas of Morrisville, just from a historic, a history perspective, with the, the, either the location of the freed blacks during the time of the Civil War, or the relocation of freed slaves. So I think that there's an opportunity to embrace that history as we look to develop the area and to, to, to keep that as a sense of what Morrisville is all about and not to inadvertently erase that history. The challenges, I think, as we look at what our existing projects are and our near-term projects within this area, especially along the Church Street corridor there and going out to Chapel Hill Road, again, is, is access and egress. I think it's just a, it's a very choke point for the town, especially for everything that we're wanting to put into this very small area. We need to be very deliberate. I think there's a lot of opportunity, but we have to be very deliberate and cognizant of what the landscape is going to look like when everything is completed, instead of looking at it in pieces. You know, we need to, what is it going to look like from a 10,000-foot view when, if everything were built out, and then look down and say, you know, how do we get in and out of this area? How do we, how do we get people, how do we invite people in? And then when they get there, how do we get them to come back again so they're not saying, I get stuck and then I'm, I can't, I can't get out?
Yeah, that's, I would say that's one of the biggest challenges that this plan's going to need to face, specific to that issue in that a comprehensive plan does allow you to look at that 10,000-foot view, but we also have an opportunity to kind of get down to the ground level and say, you know, if this is the vision that we want to see in this area, these are the steps it's going to take to get there. And just a kind of a reminder, this is what we're all thinking it could look like, but it's going to be phases. It's going to take time. You know, there's, there's certain challenges that maybe aren't even there now, but will be as new development continues to occur. So, no, that's, that's a great point, something to consider. So we can start bouncing around to, if somebody else has a comment, feel free. Yeah, go ahead.
Mine's quick. I'm going to sound like a broken record. Affordable housing is an opportunity down here, as well as, I had something similar to Councilmember Wendell. I said that the downtown that we're looking at now has the potential to give us more identity as a town. It creates a heart or a center of town and more focus for the community.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. When you talk about affordable housing in particular, do you have a, a location in mind or just in general for this area?
There's two schools of thought about affordable housing. One is blending it in everywhere. I, I think we should layer it.
Okay.
Because we, we want to have opportunities throughout the town for affordable living. I don't believe that you should concentrate it in one spot. Although that we are offering up mixed-use communities in the TOD as having an affordable housing product, I still think that we need to think about affordable housing options throughout the town.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I meant, is it's probably something that should be considered for development throughout all of these areas, but as we're thinking about the opportunities that are here, this is an area that's a focus, too.
Exactly. And what's happening now is, because we have such little land, we get really great projects that are what they call high-quality, which means unaffordable housing. So we just, we need to almost think about programming some of those efforts in, and when we have that policy discussion, that might come through.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. This area, I see a lot of potential for open spaces because I think when we had one presentation, almost 23 acres behind Swift Creek, where we have a lot of, you know, flood areas that can be utilized for opportunities. And also, we have opportunities for, we already allocated land for Veterans Memorial and also the historic park that we got from the Starmer property. So that area and also down here where we have the property for the TTA, that's all in the flood zone. So how can we utilize as an opportunity that we can work for our open spaces and where people can go, you know, and have those kind of things?
Yeah, take a potential negative or a real constraint and, and use it for something that's, that's lacking in the community.
And also, being Town Hall here, we, we need to come, a good opportunity to create a good gateway for Morrisville entering in.
Okay, great. Thanks. I don't know.
I'd say an opportunity is the whole town core. I mean.
Sure. Yeah. No? How about, go ahead. Sure.
Well, I mean, I think some of it's already mentioned, but yeah, I think the fact it's the central part of town and the Town Center demonstration project is the greatest potential, given all the other things that we have there, the farmer's market, the library. I think there's a great opportunity, and there's something this council's been searching for is that anchor, something that would bring people into this part of town, whether it's, you know, an arts performing center, a tennis center, just kidding, an art center, a recreation center, something that brings people into the core of the town. And I think the challenge, where we need to improve, and we're, we're working on these solutions, is parking. Because when we have lots of town events, there's not a lot of places to park.
Sure. I mean, you, you want the events, then when people come here, they don't have somewhere to actually park. That can be a real challenge.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you want to add?
I just have one more. I echo everything everybody said about the Town Center, and that's kind of the heart of the whole town. But the old fire station, too.
Yeah.
Right. I think there's unique opportunity there to reuse that. But then, of course, we also need to deal with the whole intersection.
Right.
And what's going to happen, you know, if we have a future grade separation there or not.
Okay. That's a good point.
TOD at the north end, I think there's a road connectivity with Airport that connects to Town Hall, and then it connects back to 50, Davis Drive, and then possibly connects a grade separation at 54. Challenges or weakness, fixing NC 54. I think once you fix it, it could look like Kirlsboro Street, so you could see a lot of development move that way.
Okay.
Aviation, I think that's a weakness. More, we're still not, as a council, agreed on a grade separation there at Morrisville Carpenter and Aviation, what it does to a downtown. Then I think some opportunities for improvement or redevelopment. I think we can maintain some open space down here, especially in the Crabtree Water Quality area.
Okay. I'm sorry, I want to make sure I caught that. So are you, are you for or against there being a grade-separated crossing when we're talking about that intersection?
I think that's what the council has to discuss.
Okay, all right.
Previous council had discussions on this.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and I think. And I think as we start to move into the plan recommendations, that's something that we can start to talk about. Yeah. Yep, no voting.
We haven't even had, we haven't even had a discussion yet.
Anybody else have any additional comments for this area? Otherwise, let's move into Area Four?
Yep. This is Area Four. The largest feature you'll notice about Area Four is this is the McCrimmon Extension area. It's one of the largest swaths of undeveloped land we have left. The Wake Competition Center is currently being constructed in that area as well. And it's a lot of the flex and industrial space, office space you'll see along the Aviation Parkway corridor headed towards the Lake Crabtree and eventually the Airport.
You ready to go? Sure.
The opportunity that I see is like work closely with the Airport Authority because this is the major chunk of how much land can be used and the kind of uses that could be used. Like, I know commercial and O&amp;I is okay, and explore residential. To what corridor is it allowed? And since this is the undeveloped area, have a good greenway and open space policy around this, not just let go the entire 400 acres for development.
Okay, great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Agree. I think we have the 54 bypass, the tax base is, increases dramatically here. This is the last biggest use. So it kind of leads into commercial uses versus residential or possible school uses up there. I agree with the greenways, especially that Borders Carry, that back end, and what they've already done with some of their campuses.
Okay.
And then the last one would be improvements or redevelopment. I think this one, to me, is how much mixed use and then how much traffic congestion is going up there.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think the greatest opportunity for redevelopment is, well, I think the, the Wake Competition Center is a great, going to be a potential great anchor for the town, give us a lot of exposure. I think that, that could then trigger other developers looking at something athletic-related that would go near there. And so I think that could just become like an athletic corridor, which would drive more events and things like that. And then obviously, I don't know, I sometimes get confused about the Airport overlay and where we can have residential or not, but with transit-oriented development, which is a great opportunity on the, all the acreage of land around the McCrimmon Extension, I think if we could have housing there, I think that'd be a good place for affordable housing around that area. So, so those are my two. I've got others, but.
Yeah, and you know, I didn't say that at the beginning here. We are, when we collect all these sheets, we're going to summarize all this information. And so, you know, if you're not able to get all the comments that you wanted to say out, we're certainly going to get it. We're going to be able to incorporate it into our next steps. And that's really true for all of our outreach is, not everybody always gets the opportunity to say everything, but that's why we want to collect these sheets. So, anybody else? Go ahead.
So, yeah, this area has, you know, fairly, fairly good exposure to major roadways, you know, Aviation and 40. I have a fairly strong concern with regard to putting any type of residential there until we do some kind of decimal study from a noise, noise perspective. Again, you know, people may buy it, but are they going to be happy living there with, you know, airplanes over four minutes and depending on what the noise level is? One of the things I think out of the box a bit, when you look at the location, this and the, the amount of space that's available, you know, I could envision in the future a, a multiplex parking structures that would lead to like an over-road monorail system that could go right from there and go to the various, over, over-the-road monorails to, to the various businesses throughout Morrisville that, that would eliminate potentially a lot of traffic. So just trying to think a little bit outside the box and think, you know, from a long-term future perspective, when you're looking at, you know, where you could potentially have a central area like that, that might be an interesting use as well.
Okay.
And we're also examining a public works facility, movement, and partnering with Wake County. So there might be some civic uses that we might be able to sort of bring together there and maybe add something else to make a second, little secondary node of civic uses.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I'm just going to echo my other point from before. This, this area is even riper, if that's a word, for redevelopment. There's a lot of flex and industrial in here that could be a much, much better use.
Yeah, when you, when you were talking about that, I mean, this is, this is an area that came to mind is, I think through that analysis, we could determine, you know, what that, what those numbers look like. Yep. I think, did you get an, I don't know that you got an opportunity. Did you want to add one? So, four. All right, which section are you on? It's cheating.
So for Section Four, I just said that we have a potential, a huge potential, to have more commercial buildings, which, because of the Airport overlay, that really limits us there. As we open the McCrimmon Extension, that we also have an opportunity to reconsider fire station, admin buildings, and public works for the town.
Sort of echoing, echoing your comment as well, so just.
Exactly.
Yep, that's great.
Reinforcing those comments.
And it, and it might be a good area also for a very large solar farm.
Okay.
So there's some interesting things that could potentially be there.
All right, good. Okay, now, now we'll move on to Section Five. Unless anybody, did everybody get an opportunity? I believe everyone gave an opportunity, or, series of comments. Okay, so Section Five.
Yeah, this is the area the Grace Park development's in. I believe Carpenter Park is in that area, the intersection of Davis and Morrisville Carpenter Road with a lot of that retail, Bethany Village Shopping Center. I think Morrisville Community Park is there as well.
So again, we'll give you a few minutes to fill out some questions. Maybe for those of you who jumped ahead, you can provide your answer first.
Section Five. I think that this is one of the areas where we have primarily residential, and we do have some mixed use with the Grace Park and some other shopping centers. So the possible redevelopment opportunity I see is we could find some land for a school or a possible new town park and some more roadway connections.
Okay, great.
Oldest neighborhoods, PUDS in Morrisville. We have the golf course down there, thriving, livable neighborhoods. We had the grade separation as a plus down there. New fire station going in somewhere probably down in, around there. I think you have water quality issues to the flooding area.
Okay.
And there's a greenway down there.
Thank you.
To Crabtree.
Okay.
I just have two in this area because this has, as stated, this area is, I think, one of the first developments, and it's kind of established, but that potentially opens up opportunity for some of the apartment complex, you know, to be redeveloped or even look for affordable living around that area.
Okay, great.
And also the open spaces near the Marshall Community Park and those areas, like if we can preserve more trees and have, you know, Phase Three, we heard about it, as a design concept, something that we can work around that area would be also good.
All right, good.
The only thing I would add is, um, sorry. Tennis court. That's an inside joke. It's a, it's a long story, inside joke. Sarcasm. The only thing I would add is, um, yeah, the, I think Mayor Per Ten made a good point about the fact that there's a lot of nice single-family in this area, which I think is good. And I think Grace Park's been nice to, for this area of town to have access to restaurants and retail, which I think's been nice. I think one improvement that I would like to see for this corridor is, and we're going to be beginning our road widening project soon for Morrisville Carpenter Road, so that's one of the greatest challenges, but sidewalks in the area somewhere along the road for people. We have sidewalks on part of. people, we have sidewalks on part of it, but then there's a part there's not. So, you know, when people want to go to an event from this area and walk across the town hall, it's really, really not safe. So, I don't know, that's something we can have. I know, I know that the road widening project would not include sidewalks, I think it would just be the widening of the road. So I don't know how, whether that's even something doable with right away, but just wanted to put that down there.
Okay. Thanks.
It does include a sidewalk. Does it now?
Includes sidewalks. Okay, okay. Sorry, I was just looking at one of the plans just to make sure. Go ahead.
Oh, section six, I'd just say that for me, it's the redevelopment opportunities for the areas, the older shopping areas around Park West Village.
So do you mean Park Place?
Yeah, are you, I'm sorry, are you commenting on section six or five? I just wanna make sure.
I said six.
Jumpers, okay, thanks, all right. Does anybody still have any questions about section five? Okay, so we're on to section six.
Yeah, so this is section six, includes Park West Village Shopping Center, Preston Neighborhood, Weston Estates. And Park Place Shopping Center, as you mentioned earlier.
Okay, I'm gonna add one. A while back, we talked about when we were talking about the light rail, commuter rail and the transit plan here in Wake County, there was an area identified in, in section six that borders on Morrisville Cary for a potential future rail station.
Okay.
It was Ivy Cottage?
Right, that's right, that's right. And then it was, you know, somewhere maybe behind Food Lion, it was, yeah, but you're right, Ivy Cottage, and I think that the distance was appropriate between this location and McCrimmon or TOD up there. So I think that in the future could be a potential option in this area. Along with all the redevelopment along Morrisville Parkway, that's old, old flex, that, that could all be redeveloped, well, not all, but there, there are opportunities in there for some redevelopment. Between like the railroad and 54.
So, numbers, you know, section six is, it's kind of an interesting quadrant just because of the, the geographic location. The, the challenges, I think, the biggest challenge in that area for Morrisville is just very limited access to get there. If you look at, you know, you start up at the top at the north end and, and one and two, and, you know, one of the strengths of six is it really is a, kind of the shopping hub for, for, for Morrisville and the entertainment center. But the, the ability for the, the majority of the town to be able to get there is kind of tough. So then I start thinking from a redevelopment, even looking at number four or going up, you know, higher, there's so much residential and some commercial, you know, as you pass through this whole core of town, it's either gonna make it even more incumbent upon us to have, you know, to really, really do something nice with our core here so that the, the rest of town can be able to enjoy that. It's just that how it's sort of peeled off the, the access to get there is very, very tough. I mean, trying to get up 54 is, you know, it's a nightmare to try to, to get there for the rest of town if they want to, you know, go to the movies or, you know, go shopping or, or what have you. Just a very simple case in point, the other night I was talking to Councilmember Scroggs Johnson, and I, I live at that end and I came up Church Street, and thank goodness I can still turn left, but I said, Vicki, I'm looking right now, do you want to have any idea what I'm looking at? She's like, what? And I said, honest to God, it's, it's like the end of a concert. All I see are headlights as far as you could possibly see, it was, the traffic was so backed up. And so I think that this, this area, I don't know, from a redevelopment perspective, I think it's a great spot, and we had discussed it for a, a fire station, if there's some land for a fire station there for that whole part of town, and maybe partnering with Cary in, in that regard as well, but just the access to get in and out of there is just challenging for Morrisville specifically, not necessarily Cary, but for the Morrisville residents.
Yeah, okay, it's, it's good, thanks. Do you want?
Banks are the Park West Center and just, just a lot of beautiful neighborhoods there. Maybe there's an opportunity. The other thing is bus service near the Park West area, which I think is something that may happen, but I feel from a lot of concerns, especially if the, the communities around there and the senior community out there are just having more bus service, so to the extent we could be a part of the Go Triangle efforts. And then maybe green space and open space, some of the land around those areas is flood plain, so maybe, you know, opportunities of looking at land acquisition and things like that, that we could create more open space. I think that's just one thing, as I look at our land use, I just see, you know, we just, we don't want to develop so much that we just don't have spaces where people can go gather and hang out and do things and play, so.
Okay, thanks.
I'd note that that's the, section six also has our only senior living community at Preston Point, and that's, I think, a need that we need to address somewhere in town to try to influence the market, to provide some kind of housing for our seniors as they're no longer able to age in place. So that's more big picture.
Okay. Anybody else?
And a potential strength later, but Park Place, as was mentioned, is not, needs a new anchor or some way to revitalize that area.
The points are covered, I don't want to repeat it.
No, it's great, that's good, that means we're, we're all thinking the same, same kind of ideas that are out there. All right, anybody else want to add to six? All right, well Brad's gonna come by and collect your sheets. Thanks for working through this session with us. I, like, as I promised, we were trying to get done by eight o'clock, we had one more slide I was gonna throw up there.
You know, we also wrapped up 10 minutes earlier, if there's any last questions you guys want to ask about the sections or anywhere in town, you know, feel free to do so right now. If not, please jot them down, we'll get back to you. But I can collect them now, all right? Let's do that.
Also, since we have 10 more minutes to, after you provided the last slide, I know that I can force everybody to just kind of put their comments on hold, we probably are gonna have time to pick that back up.
Yep.
You know, for another 10 minutes or so. So everything that you wrote down, now's your opportunity.
Yes.
Thank you for holding for all those that I knew were here to say something.
So let me wrap up, as Courtney just said, let me wrap up this last slide and then we will take any additional questions or comments that you may have for the existing conditions report as well as the trends and issues document. So, sort of next steps for the planning process, you know, looking specifically at the existing conditions report analysis as well as that trends and issues, we're, we're gonna take town council comments, any potential revisions that we need as we move forward. You know, we're, it's important, and we always say, it's very important for us to know, you know, about as much as we possibly can as it's relative to, to the land use planning, to, you know, some of the open space conditions or open space issues that are out there, you know, what the community's thinking, what you're thinking before we move forward. So we'll take those comments, we'll fold them in, but really from here, we're also starting to move into that plan making phase, so we're hoping we have the information that we need. We're gonna finalize that document, it'll be publicized to the public again, so they're able to see it and comment on it. The next two steps for us that are sort of happening, I would say, parallel to one another, they're just on different timeline tracks, are the subarea plans. So we've already started a little bit of the subarea discussion, defining what some of these boundaries may be, starting to think about what some of the issues might be, who we need to reach out to, be it property owners or some of the key stakeholders in these, in these areas, as well as we're gonna need to start doing some reconnaissance, so, you know, going back out and even doing a deeper dive, more so than what we even did for the existing conditions for the land use, land use map. And then also starting to move into this community vision and goals. Part of what we did tonight is the beginning of this. We're gonna be doing similar exercises with the public at various different outreach opportunities, you know, over the next few months, and what you're gonna see as sort of a culmination of that is the, the visioning statement or that vision statement. So that'll sort of be like the guiding text for all the things that we're trying to accomplish in this, in this land use plan update. We'll also start to draft some goals in a summary memo, and, you know, I, I always say this, when we start this process, you're gonna get the first blush of what these goals look like, what we think we've heard from everybody, you know, throughout this outreach process. We're gonna give everyone an opportunity to respond to those goals, we want to make sure that they reflect what your vision is for Morrisville. Before we move into, now that we know these are the goals, how do we achieve them through plan recommendations, specific guiding policies, as well as some of the implementation strategies that are gonna come next. So that, that's kind of the high level where we're at and where we're, where we're hoping to go. So I think with that, as Courtney said, and I did, I did make a promise that we would be done close to eight. If there are additional comments or questions that you want to provide as it relates to the existing conditions report and the trends and issues document, now's a great time.
Councilmember Wendell, if anyone else would like to make comments, please lift your red things, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. We had mentioned a couple of times, and I know we've discussed it, well, we've, we've talked about it several times, I don't know that we've had pros and cons discussions per se, but especially as we're looking at the, the land use for the town, this concept of workforce housing, I think, is, is going to be vital. We're, you know, it's, it's wonderful for homeowners today that our housing prices are, are, you know, on the rise, but at the same time, you know, I think from a, from a community perspective, to limit it to only upper middle class to, that, who can afford to live in this town is, I don't know if that's just indicative of good humanness, if you will. So as we're looking at areas, you know, land, land is only gonna go up, and I, I think it'll be a discussion for council is if there is a way that we can work with developers in certain areas to make it affordable to them to, to maintain their profit line, but that we can, we can incorporate workforce housing. You know, I've said it a million times, I, I don't know how many people have come to me saying, you know, I, I work here, but I wish I could live here, and, and they just can't afford to live here if they're, if they're typically hourly wage employees. And so I think that's, that's gonna be something that is gonna be very important to me as, as we look. And then Mayor Protim, Scroggs Johnson, and I think, forgive me, Councilmember Johnson if you said it or not, but, you know, I, I don't like the idea of potentially creating or recreating segregation or ghettos, and I'm not talking about racial segregation, I'm talking about socioeconomic segregation, but if we can, you know, if we can work to incorporate so that we are one contiguous community, so you don't have people living on one side of the railroad tracks as defined as X group, so, just as we look forward, that's something that is, you know, important to me and, and to some folks.
Yeah, and I know we, we touched on that in the trends and issues document a little bit, there's a dedicated section to it. Certainly as we move through the, the planning phase of this, we also want to look at these inclusionary options. We want to make sure that what we're recommending is something that can kind of be blanketed across the entire community. You don't want to focus this into one specific area, so cer- certainly something we will be considering as we start drafting these policies and recommendations.
Councilmember Johnson, please, then Councilmember Schlink.
So just a couple of questions, the subarea plans, you know, I like those three areas that we're gonna emphasize, but tell me what, at the end of this, what is, are we gonna have a separate plan for each one of those areas? Are we gonna have a separate document? Tell me what to expect.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right, we didn't really touch on that. No, so the, the hope is, well, and what we will do is we'll prepare, as part of the land use plan, there will be a chapter, and it'll be the subarea plans chapter, and the three subareas will get their own sections within that chapter. And I, how that plays out from there, I, I guess I, I don't know, but it, it will be a chapter within the land use plan update. And, you know, within those, when we start talking about the, the subareas, they'll have alternatives, so you might have an alternative one, alternative two, and it'll be something that is responsive to the feedback that we're hearing from everybody. We have not, we have not said what's going on, these parcels that are, these properties that, we've really not talked about exactly what has to happen inside these plans, just these are areas that we know need a little bit more focus than what you're gonna do for the entire land use plan update. Yeah, yeah, you're right, we sort of, I mentioned them, but we didn't really talk about how they fold into the land.
Okay, thank you, that, that's helpful. And then going back to the exists, existing conditions report, on, on page 25, you have that, and we talked about that a little bit before, about the employment projections and you, you end at 2015, yet when we talk about residential population projections, you go beyond 2015. So why do, why don't we have employment projections?
So we don't, you're right, so we have, right now we have what the, the past and up to the most recent data sets are, that are available to us for those that are employed, but then for housing projections, population projections, there's just the data that's available to us. That doesn't mean that we, I mean, we could look for more data sets that may be out there, but in terms of employment projections, it's not something that we had readily available to us for this. And, and that data was really up to 2015 was the most recent data set that we had.
Okay, I think, okay, I think that's gonna be a really important number for us, because clearly we have, there's a lot more employment that's going, or a lot, a lot more office and a lot more development that's gonna come on the eastern side of Morrisville, and to kind of understand those numbers, I, I, I just think is gonna be very important, and that goes to Satish's question before about the 33,000 people that are going in and out of Morrisville. That's just our residents and, that are going out, and then those that are coming here to work, that, that number does not include commuters that just drive through here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, that's fair, that's a fair assumption. And, and one of the things that we should be keeping in mind as we start moving into this next phase of the plan is, also when we start providing recommendations in the future about what, what future land uses should be, we can give, you know, sort of industry standards or, or best-known practices for what these numbers might be, for the projections of if you make a swath of land, this type of office, you can anticipate that if it were to develop that type of use, it could be this amount of, you know, employees moving in, or this amount of square footage of commercial coming in. Those are, those are figures that we can start to provide. Now the assumption is that they, they develop the way that we're, that we're recommending, both by the land use that we're identifying, but also by the current zoning code, you know, using these regulations and these projected land uses, this is what you could anticipate in this area, but that's still separate from market. I think the market still needs to be a little bit more defined, so we can say, yeah, not only should it be this use, but there's a market for that use. So that's, that's something we can look into as we start moving, moving forward.
And so then to kind of follow up a little bit more on that, it, it, I think it's gonna be important to, and I know we won't be able to fix this, but it's gonna be important to think about and try to figure out how to give those folks that are gonna be working here in Morrisville the opportunity to live here in Morrisville so that we can have some influence on those numbers. And, and I know that's not, you, you don't, just because you build a residential community doesn't mean the people that work right there are gonna live right there. I get that, but, but there's opportunities to, to help influence that. And so I think as we're talking about employment projections in Morrisville, which I think are gonna be significant in the future, we need to identify places for those folks to live right here.
The plan needs to take those into consideration, like that, that condition right there, that's where the land use has to play off of itself, where if you were to recommend this type of office use, and the hope is that you're also trying to, maybe this is one of the goals of the plan, or one of the objectives is, we want to increase the amount of people who live in this area, work in this area, and I think based on the numbers that we're looking at, that probably should be one of the goals that we're considering or, or one of the objectives. And to do that, the land use that we recommend needs to both accommodate the kinds of places they want to work at and the kinds of uses they want to live in, the kinds of residential options they want to live in. Definitely a, I would say probably one of the more significant land use challenges that we're gonna have to. we're going to have to work out as we move forward.
So I just thought of this one then. So we have all kinds of demographic information about our residents. I guess there's no way to get any kind of demographic, I mean, I know that's not a census question, so how do you get some kind of demographic information for those that work here? Do we have a really young workforce here in the town of Mooresville? Do we have an older workforce? I want, is there any way to gather that kind of information?
There's ways to interpret what that might be at a general level, but I think getting it down to the granular level you may be talking about, that could be a challenge. But again, I really do think that's something, we're not going to just say this use should be on this parcel without really thinking about the considerations of where they're going to live, how they're going to get here. And those are the kinds of things we're going to need to answer. So yeah, these are, these are good points, something that we're going to have to consider. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, it was Councilmember Schlink, then I'm going to sneak in a question or two, and then Councilmember Garamella.
Along that same lines, I think we need to think about infrastructure, because that's what we're already backed up. And then I think that's where you guys, again, can come in and help when you talk to the public, because you've said a little here, but with the impact of surrounding neighborhoods, or surrounding development around us, that's what's overwhelming about this. When, you know, when we drive through town, anytime at 5:00 or anytime in the triangle, everything is crowded. So it's just not Mooresville. But at the same time, we're talking about, I think we're adding 15,000 more jobs versus 15,000 more people, but that's more people coming into Mooresville, and they're coming into the east side. Is there enough infrastructure? And then the one I'll end mine by saying, I think you go back and look at the 2009 plan, when they surveyed the public, they asked them how they felt about growth. Was there too much, too little? They broke it down in the sections you did, pretty much. And then when you do your market research, I think as a council and as a town, we have to understand, we talked about Park West Village, you need another anchor. What does that do to the downtown that we want to develop? How do you attract 15,000 feet of retail downtown when you have spaces all over the town? It's just, there's only so much you can do.
Yeah, I mean, you could really run up against a capacity issue. And I think one of the slides that we talked about were what some of the key themes were from the existing conditions report, or some of our initial findings was, traffic and congestion are an easy thing to say, but breaking down where that traffic's coming from and how it's moving through the community are definitely some unique impacts, some unique challenges that Mooresville faces that, you know, in several of the communities I've worked at throughout the country, the impact, the impact one community is facing because of all of the development around it, I've not seen it like that before, but there's definitely some opportunities to take advantage of that. But you also have to figure out how to mitigate those challenges. So I know that's us folding in studies that have already been done, but also considering the land use decisions that we make and the impacts that those could have on that infrastructure. It's a good, it's a good time.
Yeah, so I think we'll need some assistance facilitating the discussion about, we have a lot of residents now saying that there's too much density, our infrastructure isn't caught up. And then we have to balance that with the fact that our neighbor communities are growing like crazy, and if we say no to certain types of development, they'll say yes, and we still get the traffic.
Not the infrastructure.
For example, but without the infrastructure or the tax revenue. So do we want to try to be an island and just be ourselves, or do we want to be part of a larger fabric? I wanted to, a quick question about this slide with the six different key themes. Is that in order of frequency that they're mentioned?
No.
Okay, so those are just listed as six.
Yeah, that's fair. It was put in a list form, but it was a bullet form. I mean, those are just some key themes that we, that we heard.
Okay, that's good. For the 2023 $35,000, $35,000 people population estimate, is that, I guess you got info from staff, would that be everything that's, can be built in the population projection by zoning by right? Or?
No.
No, so that's just?
That's a projection for growth in the region, and then boiling it down to Mooresville specifically. So we have multiple data sources. The study, the impact that you're talking about, wouldn't even take into consideration the potential land uses that we may be recommending. So the land uses that we're going to recommend in this plan need to respond to many different factors, you know, what the community wants, what the business community wants, what stakeholders want, what you as a town council wants. But also what the projections are saying, the types of uses or the amount of people that are coming here would be. There's also a whole separate study of when we start recommending land uses, based on the use that we're providing or that we're recommending and what the current zoning code is, you know, what that total build-out might be. If you did that for every parcel that ever had a use assigned to it, it would be astronomical, because that's not really how the market works. The market would respond back and say, then you don't have capacity for that use. So that's something to look out in the next 10, 20, 30 years. So those are, those are different scenarios, and not really something that we'll deep-dive into, but certainly something that we consider as we're providing recommendations for land use. I don't know if that answered your question.
That got a little bit in the weeds for me. I got a little bit lost there, but that's okay.
But this won't show, so I want to say, this won't show like a total build-out. If you did a total build-out, the number would be much, much higher.
Okay, so I mean, we need a better understanding that we can communicate with the public, like how much can we actually move the needle here?
Yeah.
And how much is just a wave coming through, and we just can just try to decide where the wave's going to end up a little bit.
And the decisions that this plan will help make, and then ultimately what that might influence in your zoning code, or what that might influence in terms of the policies that you'll be enforcing, you know, you can, you can move that needle. You could make a significant impact on the types of developments that occur here. And there's a lot of different approaches about how that could, that could play out. So certainly something that as we move through this project, we want to make sure we're all on the same page about what you're trying to accomplish, and what you either want to allow, or what you want to, you know, not see happen. I think that's, that's an important, it's an important aspect of what this plan's trying to achieve.
So we're looking for objectives we're trying to achieve, and also things we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, Councilmember Garamella.
Thanks, Mayor. Nick, more on, I was trying to understand, which I've been struggling from almost last two to three years, is every developer who comes here says the trip generation is so-and-so, you know, for my particular, like let it be single-family, multifamily, general, commercial, or this whole types of uses that we have. Do you have industry standards? Because the reason I ask for a chart for trip generations, you know, like is a mixed use going to generate more traffic compared to industrial, compared to educational, compared to office? You know, look at the, you know, top of the pyramid, which are, which is the highest trip generators? And because the reason I ask that is, it's very important for me in decision-making, infrastructure and schooling, that's what pretty much you have covered, that is the critical part. How would that play in in the future land use? So that's, I don't want, like, I hear more sugar coating from every, you know, rezoning application or more of these things, but more of industrial standard that you can set us to keep that and have a good understanding.
Yeah, there, so there are industry standards for trip generations per a land use. They do, when you start boiling them down to a specific region, obviously there's some, there's some acceptance on what someone would drive to a certain use versus another. You know, again, that kind of feeds into the land use. That's one of those variables that we will use to decide what a use might best be, based on all the other feedback points that we've heard. I think applying like a specific industry standard for each one of these uses and giving you that number, I don't know that we have.
Like, just if I had to put all these, like, all the land uses in the chart, and say which in the priority of which generates more traffic, you know, with the TIA, like, you have in the past, we have seen, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Because that way, I'm saying, I'm not going to a particular parcel and saying, does it generate more if it had, you know, hospital or office or those kind of things, but more, you know, trying to understand what is the top of the foot chain that consumes a lot of, you know, traffic. And next, you know, parks are good, but parking, having a park at a place where the traffic is clogged.
Sure.
Is that, you know?
Yeah, that's something, so I guess as it's relevant to the land use plan, if that's something that we think would help, kind of help guide that discussion or make more clear, certainly we could look at that.
We're going to go Councilmember Rao, then Mayor Protim, and then Councilmember Johnson and Wendell.
A follow-up on a point that Mayor Colley made. I mean, I think that's one thing that would help us, you know, when we're making, over the last several years, we've had a number of rezonings. Almost every land use decision I've made since I was elected has been, which was, you know, eight years ago, is land use rezoning.
Okay.
So developers can't build what they want to build, so they come in and they rezone. We have citizens that are concerned about congestion and traffic and infrastructure. But at the same time, I think what we need to get out there as a council and to the public is, how can we truly move the needle? I've heard expert land use planners like Mitch Silver, who was the former director of Planning in Raleigh, and now is the commissioner of New York Parks, told me of the whole New York City, that whenever you have a decision to put mixed use and rooftops that bring economic impact, that you actually have better control than denying development because of, you know, office and retail actually bringing in more traffic.
Sure.
And that you actually have more control. But this is a very hard discussion to have in a town where you have tremendous congestion on 54 Mooresville carpenters. So I think that you don't, I know you don't have an answer to that, but I think that's sort of where we are as a council, because time and time again, I feel like our backs are held to the wall saying, approve or not approve. And, you know, we're not looking at sort of the economic value, the, you know, the best, the best land use decision that will give us the most control to actually reduce traffic and, you know, grow the, grow the tax base. And so, but, you know, they come, it goes through the zoning process, it comes to us, and then we have to make the final decision. And it's, it's, we got to hear from a lot of citizens, and I don't think they understand that.
Sure.
So I just think that was a good point the mayor made, and I think that's something that we need to start having that discussion earlier on in the year when we go into retreat. And also, how do we interact with our zoning board? Because our staff will make recommendations, but sometimes things come so late in the process to us, and then we're like, you know, are you yes or no?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, obviously, one of the most important distinctions that you want to make here is, there's the land use plan, and what we're trying to accomplish about establishing and identifying future land uses. Then there's your zoning code, and they are two, obviously, two different factions. One is a policy, a guide. Another one is a regulatory, you know, basically the law. But what we're starting to do here today is establish what, community-wide, this is what we want to see happen in the future. And you can take this land use policy in the future and start to make amendments to your zoning code if you need to. If you feel like your zoning code is accommodating the types of usage you'd like to see, great. But those are the types of things that you want to start in this conversation now, as opposed to doing it at the zoning level later. Get this in line with what you want to see, and then start looking at your zoning in that next phase. Okay.
Mayor Protim, please.
So this exercise is very critical for me personally, because I see our town as nearing its build-out phase. We're looking at not the final, less than 17% of potential build-out, and then redevelopment. As Councilmember Johnson mentioned, it's important that we think about that redevelopment very carefully. As to the mayor's comment about when everybody's building around us, we feel a little bit helpless to influence being a smaller town in the triangle. I think that one way to look at that is say, what can we do within our resources to make our residents and businesses the best quality of life that we can provide for them, and sell that vision to our neighbors and other communities so that they can maybe carry that forward and remember that their actions also impact our environment? So it's a matter of not just reacting, but let's be proactive and think about what we want that's the best quality that we can provide. Now, changes are going to be needed to improve our connectivity. They are going to be needed to improve the quality of life from Mooresville. And change is not always easy, and we shouldn't always take the easy path. So we, when we have things like rezoning, we need to have an idea of what we think good, better, and best is. Rezoning is the last tool that we have in our toolbox to really influence our community when we have just so little development and redevelopment. So we've been stripped of a lot of our abilities to influence the projects, but rezoning is probably one of the most critical. So let's think very carefully as we approach that. And then regarding zoning being the second phase, let's look at those categories we have in our UDO. As we know what good, you know, better and best is, do they really match now with our current thinking? And be very critical of that, and then see if there's ways we can tweak it.
Councilmember Johnson, please. Oh, okay, I apologize. Councilmember Wendell?
Yeah, so, you know, I've had some really interesting conversations with the town manager about vision and what, you know, what vision is all about. And when we're looking at our plans, thinking of the vision of the future. And, you know, it's interesting, because he's, when you look at the perspective of this map, and we're talking about land use, and how are we going to utilize the land that is here? I think, you know, every one of us had mentioned the word infrastructure at one point in time or another, and connectivity. And, you know, as I'm, as I'm looking, anything to the left, and so 1, 3, and 5, the odd-numbered areas, from an infrastructure perspective within the border of our town, it's going to be almost impossible without redevelopment to be able to really include anything from an infrastructure perspective without negatively impacting a community. There are so many communities here, I'm just looking at, trying to figure out, where could we put roadways to be able to better connect? And I think we, you know, we want to, we want to better connect. And at some point in time, I know, you know, we want to, it's always a town's, I think, desire to increase revenues, but at some point in time, we're going to have to say, okay, this is what we got. And to that vision, do we want to be a metropolis, or do we want to be a nice suburb with green space? And when do we say, okay, stop? We, you know, we, we don't have the infrastructure to support what we have now, and can we assure, how do we put into the plan, I guess, is my question? How do we assure that we include the infrastructure to be able to support that and not rely on NCDOT to, you know, widen roads on east and west when we have the entire central core that is, is going to just continue to get more and more congested? So it's not as easy a task as sometimes it feels like it should be. Because when you start really looking at, how do you connect all the dots? And again, it's projecting in the future, what would the map look like 20 years from now? You know, where are all those lines going to be that's going to give us the infrastructure we need to be able to maintain the quality of life for our residents? And, you know, at some point in time, we're either going to redevelop, or we're going to have to go high-rise. Because there's, there's just our population, you know, we're going to be limited, and we're going to get into a point of diminishing returns before long.
Okay. I think everyone shared their thoughts. Nick, thank you very much. A great presentation you facilitated, some really good discussion.
Thanks.
I think we all shared some good stuff that we can all think about going forward. Brad, I'll pass it back to you.
If you have any questions that we didn't get to, that you wanted to have us get back to on the notepads, give them to me, I can compile those. If you put a little star or something, just let me know, the follow-up, that would be great. And your name, just so I know who to address it to, or at least whose question it is. Other than that, thank you so much for coming out. Okay, yes.
May I have this?
Yes, you can have it. Yeah. Everybody, everybody turned in their sheets, right? Yes, we have it. So the markers are here in case somebody had trouble articulating a thought, but we wanted to, since we were making good time, we just wanted to go ahead and, I know, I know I had to let you down with the coloring thing, but yeah, they were just there in case we had to sort of physically draw on the maps, or someone didn't understand the boundaries of the geography, but, um, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
I've got one more question. So you've had these maps out at different events, or at least at one of them?
A variation, yeah.
And you've asked folks to kind of put pins, markers, whatever, as to what they like, what they didn't like?
Yes.
The one I, the one I witnessed was fabulous. So where are we going to see that information? How are we going to get that input?
So what we plan on doing, so we do have that paper map that you saw, I think that was East meets West, yeah. So we, yeah, we had a lot of good participation at that event. We almost, at one point, we had a line at our town of people trying to put little stickies where they, you know, things they liked and things they didn't like, or, you know, things they, hey, we need this in our town, this other town has it, why don't we have this? So we want to take those data points and sort of convert them into like a digital format. So we use, we're talking about using map.social, which I think you all have taken a look at on our project website before. Essentially, it creates little GIS points. And that way, we can better organize and keep track of them. We also actually have the raw data, the map with the physical, you know, little flags on them, that we'll also document, and which we already have documented. And we're going to try to get this scanned, or at least And we're going to try to get this scanned, or at least photo-documented with pictures. And then we plan on doing this again at the trick-or-treat, truck-or-treat event on the 27th. I will be there for that. I will also have a map up at the Western Wake Farmers Market this Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, so feel free to stop by there as well. We also have an online survey that, on our project website, that was announced in a postcard mail-out, which, yeah, it sounds like you got that. That is almost ident, actually, it is identical to this exercise. It has, except it has a colored map just like that, not the black and white, or the non-colored one. Same questions, same geographical areas. So yeah, we're, it's, it's proving effective. That, yeah, that was a great example. The one East meets West was a huge success, so we want to keep replicating it as much as possible. Also going to some HOAs coming up. I think Thursday I have Breckenridge, so yeah, so I'll probably see you there. And then I think it's Providence Place and Kits Creek.
Quick question about that. Is it okay for anyone in town to go to any of those HOAs? Or is it just for that HOA?
It's geared towards the HOAs, but yeah, I mean, anybody is welcome to attend.
Okay, so any of these are open events? Okay.
They're open event, they're on our project website announced with the times and locations, but they're more targeted towards the areas that's, we're going to those folks instead of them coming to us, so, yeah.
When will we see Nick again?
You know, we didn't establish a next date. One of the next things that we'll be doing, though, is talking about the vision and goals. And then I think also we'll be starting to have a conversation about the subarea plans. So I don't have a, I don't think we have a date, but... Yeah, we don't have a hard date yet for when he's going to come back. And he's going to be starting to hit the ground running with subarea planning, as you can see. We'll actually formulate a deliverable of the community vision, community goals statement.
Could you review where the three subareas are for those who haven't read the report?
Subareas, and it's in your briefing sheet that you may have seen, it's the McCrimmon extent, uh, wish I could show you on screen, the McCrimmon Extension area, which is that large swath, it's section four on your map.
One hundred acres.
Yeah, and it's, and it's really mostly focused on that undeveloped area and the kind of periphery of that area. The second area is the area south of the new Wake Tech campus in section two. It's all the way down kind of where the Sheetz gas station, the NC 54 and McCrimmon meet.
You're around TOD.
Yeah, that's, so it's like, yeah, east of the, of the existing TOD area that we have in our 2009 plan. And just looking at that area more closely, what, you know, do we want to complement that TOD use or not, or whatever? There's airport overlay, which is a huge factor in that area as well. Third area is our town center, town core area. Just taking a look at that, that, that's beyond just a little downtown, but sort of periphery of that area. Taking just some more enhanced focus on that. That is the epicenter of our town, so obviously we want to take a closer look at that area as well.
Do you also sort of, as part of this, take a look at our town center area plan? That was the bigger, and how that's changed, or how that needs to change moving forward?
Yeah, so they, they have taken a look at the 2007 town center plan, and we, in fact, we were just talking about this today, and how they're going to incorporate some of the findings in that, or, or the sentiment in that. There's a lot of, somebody mentioned the importance of preserving historic structures and sort of building off of that history. So they are fully aware of that, that plan.
Thank you again. We look forward to the next stage on that. And now I'll pass it to Town Manager Page.
plan update that you will get at next meeting. Staff has worked to try to incorporate the questions that council has asked into the chapter-by-chapter discussions. So they, so Ben's added that into the presentation. So some of those things that you've talked about, that there were still questions, we're going to be hitting as we go through those areas to try to make it more effective. If your goal is to adopt the plan, and this is still up to you, but if your goal is to potentially adopt the plan in December, our recommendation is to put a very similar front work session at each of the next three meetings to allow dedicated time to talk about that when everybody is fresh. I would tell you 5:15 to 6:15 for an hour of discussion. Understand that people have some difficulty getting here, so if you wanted to continue the 5:30 to 6:15, and then a break for a regular meeting, we could do that in the item I'm bringing forth at next week's meeting to modify our 2018 calendar. I've mentioned that for a variety of reasons, the November 20th work session should be postponed or canceled. What I'd like to do is not cancel it, but suggest that we add two hours, another like four to six work session at our December 11th meeting. It could be done for two reasons. One, it is a very heavy item already, and as things track through, we may need it just for that. Or we could put some work session items there as well. The work isn't going away is really the point to do that. So those are recommendations that I was going to ask you to consider so that we could properly notice if council was supportive of this. And then I've got some other stuff on the other page.
Okay, please use your red things if you want to weigh in. I see Mayor Pretten would like to weigh in.
So I need some clarity. A lot of our meetings have been going to midnight because we haven't either had enough time to cover, discuss, or we're not making decisions and we're pushing things out and have to recover them. So if we are going to start work sessions early, I would request that we stop our meetings at 10:00 or 11:00, because the idea to move them earlier is that everybody is fresher, is able to make more informed decisions and, and be able to react better versus at 11:00 o'clock when we start work sessions, nobody is, is fresh and the discussion is very limited. So how does the council feel about with this proposal of moving things early? We don't go to midnight and make, and hold ourselves accountable for that.
Okay, next, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Garamella, and then we'll circle back to your question, if that's okay.
I, I'd like to hear it on everybody's comment about the time of the meetings, not at the end.
Okay, well, they can choose if they wish to, yep.
So I'm, I'm, you know, I, I have a flexible schedule, so 5:15 is fine with me, 5:30's fine with me. I think I would agree, we should shoot for something earlier than midnight, but, and hopefully we can hold ourselves to that. I'm not trying to make it a hard and fast rule right now, but I, I would definitely agree. If we're all going to come in an hour early, we shouldn't be here on midnight, too. Staff doesn't want to be here to midnight either, quite frankly.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
My, my fundamental concern is when we came up with the scheduling, we added an extra meeting to offset some of the other meetings and the timings so that we can do it. Now, we are on top of it, we are going to add an extra, I don't know where we are getting to this, because there has to be some kind of a discipline in our council where we conduct it and finish it in time. Otherwise, we're adding and adding, and it's just stretching from like four, if you're talking, talking 5:30, it's six and a half hours, it's not good for the staff, it's not good for the people. And how do we basically streamline it? And that's my main concern. And then December 11th, I got plans for that, so I may not be even able to attend that one.
And if I could interject before other council members speak, I think that there's lots of additional things council needs to discuss about our meeting management. And no, we're going to plan on doing some of that at our retreat. My recommendations here are just to get us through the year so that we could have some more of that robust discussion before we set our 2019 calendar. I think that speaks to a lot of, I'm talking about an interim, short-term, for what I know is on the calendar now. I think there's lots more we need to talk about for the fundamental challenges we're having, so I will acknowledge that. For some of the November meetings, there are additional work sessions, if you've looked at your calendar, aside from the comprehensive transportation plan. So they could be pushed off. There's consequences to those decisions as well, that we just have to recognize and acknowledge. That's your CIP, that's your bond referendum discussions, that's, those are important topics to you, so just want to be aware. December 11th is a scheduled meeting, so it's not an additional meeting, I'm, and I'm not trying to add another meeting, I'm trying to move one that is already scheduled.
That was specific to me, because you're adding a four to six, and then the regular meeting. I'm planning for that.
I understand.
Councilmember Wendell, then Councilmember Ral, please.
So just real quick, Town Manager Page, this is kind of like catch-up, right? To get us caught up, what you've added?
I, I can't tell you catch-up, I'm trying to keep our nose above the water.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I was, I was just wondering, it's, you know, it would be very difficult for me to, to get here by 5:15. And I, I know we have a lot that we need to do by the end of the year, and I don't know if council would be amicable to, instead of doing an extra hour here and an extra hour there, and potentially staying late, especially with the tough decisions, because, you know, you, we do, the studies show when you're tired, you start getting afraid, and your, your frontal cortex doesn't work as well, and you just don't make good decisions, and emotion starts rising. Would we, could we possibly do a Saturday and, and between now and the end of the year, and, you know, do a four or five-hour session to just knock out all of the major things that we need to do, so that we don't have to add it, spreading it out, just as a suggestion? But I agree, one of the things that, that I want us to be able to do when we have these, we often get the presentations, so we get presentations, and then we ask questions. And we don't, I haven't experienced, other than when we're in closed session, where council has been able to actually have dialogue and do, you know, pros and cons to subjects, we give our thoughts. But I, I would like it somehow, our meetings to be arranged so that we can actually have, like, discussion back and forth, and dialogue back and forth, rather than each of us just, like, stating positions, and then, and then asking staff questions. It just seems like we get a lot done when we have dialogued with each other.
Councilmember Ral?
I believe that starting the work sessions earlier, as Mayor Pretten, as Crogan, as Johnson has suggested, is a good idea, but I, I do think we should try to do our best to be out by 10:00. In 2011 and 12, you know, every council's a different council, there was a rule of hard and fast stop at 10:00. And during those years, it felt to me like our meetings got really rushed. When Mayor Stolman took over, we basically said, we're just going to try to go as long as we can. And we had pretty long nights, but, you know, and it might be just a factor of the body of work, so many multiple projects going on. So I think it's helpful to have a, a, a stop, just say like 10:00 o'clock. Unlike Councilmember Wendell, wouldn't mind some work sessions on the weekend, just because we're less tired, we're fresh, we have a few more hours, do it in the morning, still have that half-day to do your stuff. Because that's where it gets tricky for me, is, and, and each of us have our own schedules, our own demands with, you know, family and work. But to have two council meetings and then, you know, another, you know, work session or off-council weeks, then it really makes like you're having a council meeting every week. And that just, you know, it, it, some weeks it's, it's easy, some weeks it's hard. So, but I appreciate the town manager sort of doing the best she can to just make sure that, she's trying to just get things moved, and she's trying to make sure that the town, the business of the town can move forward. So I would just say, you know, whatever we can talk about during the retreat, in terms of just productivity, the meetings, things that we can each do to streamline so we can hit to that goal at 10:00, realizing sometimes we might go over. So I don't know, Liz, you were on the council meeting 2012, but sometimes it felt like we were just like, we got to get out of here, and 10:00 o'clock, hard stop. And then we can't do that if we still have stuff to talk about, so.
We never stopped.
We never stopped, right.
Would say, are we right, did we want to stop, or we, we always continued, we never stopped.
We did, so, I mean, I think setting it as a goal, because if we're in a seven-hour meeting, and we start at 5:30, and then by 10:00 o'clock, that's five hours, you're already, you're very tired, and we can't make really important decisions. And we've had instances where we just, we're in debate, but we're tired, we're, we get a little short, you know, I want to get out, so that's just my, my feedback.
Okay, Councilmember Schlink?
Oh, my feedback is, hey, you know, we're doing the work of the people, so whatever it takes, and I'm open to any suggestions from Saturday to, you know, coming in early, that's fine. I'm looking forward to the retreat and kind of working out some of the hashing it out.
I'd sort of echo Councilmember Schlink's. I, some people do have full-time jobs, so we want to be respective of that. Also, weekends is maybe a big ask for staff, so that would be something that you can decide whether or not that's reasonable. It sounds like we have enough support for maybe doing that, if it works for the staff side as well. 5:15 would be fine with me, the four to six would be fine with me. The goal of 10:00 o'clock is good. I would hesitate to make it a firm hard stop, because I think it's important to, at that time, make the decision. And I think Mayor Pretten wanted to weigh in, and then Councilmember, Mayor Pretten, please.
So Saturday wasn't brought up when I first made my comments. I did want to provide some input on Saturdays. Saturdays are a big, they could be big for families with sporting activities and so forth. I'm a little bit hesitant on the Saturday for staff as well reasons. If we could consider a second night of work session on the same week of a council week, that would allow us to have that every-other cadence. And because the every-week cadence is kind of exhausting to me, because our meetings go so late, it, my Wednesdays are ruined, as far as, you know, trying to catch up and everything. But if we did something twice on the same week, that would be something we could plan for, those of us that work, we could travel on the off weeks. It just helps staff prepare for meetings better. Staff needs time to prepare for the briefings and so forth. If we're doing it every week, that is rigorous for them, and I just want to be respectful of everybody's time.
Councilmember Johnson, and then Town Manager Page, if you want to circle us back.
Okay, well, Vicky beat me to it. I would say, look for another night during the week, too. I don't know how flexible we are, all are, but I'm, I'm happy to do that, too. I'm happy to do Saturday, I'll do a Sunday afternoon if we have to. I think everything's, should be on the table.
Thank you. I, I think those are some great ideas, and, and I think that they, they could weigh into a strategy for 2019, along with everything else we've do. Knowing what, I've had individual conversations with council, what we experience at holiday time, I'm giving you my best shot here. We don't have everybody in place to try to add meetings. Any other days are on weekends going into November and December. That's our reality, and why I'm making these recommendations now. I, I chose December 11th because I already had you, because I can't get you at any other time. It's really my, my only shot to try to put that in there. And if, if I could try to, I heard general consensus, I know it's difficult, and I'm very grateful you're considering this, 5:30. We can be flexible for people that are coming in late. We are, Erin and I are sort of timestamping the meetings, we're, we've been doing that after the agenda is set. I think she and I can sort of rise to the challenge of doing it as the items are coming forward over the next three meetings. forward over the next three meetings from staff. We sort of know that from the rolling calendar and estimating what the time you're going to spend, and try to manage towards that 10-ish as best possible, and maybe make some tough decisions as we go along, if this framework will work through December, and we're willing to try it.
Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Wendell. Councilmember Wendell.
So this is probably more of a procedural thing, just because I don't know. You know, one of the things that limit us in regular council meetings oftentimes, and even in the work sessions, is the length of time of the presentations. Do we have to do the entire presentation? Is it for the, for the public? If we have the information ahead of time, could the presentations be more high-level? And then if we have any specific questions, we can, we can address those? Or do we have to have that? And I don't mean it bad, but do we have to have the 45-minute presentation? Because then it really does limit us in the amount of dialogue that we can have, and then we're already moving on to the next. And so we wind up having to have conversations outside of council to figure out who thinks about what, where. So I just, that's a general question. I don't know what the requirement is.
So a couple comments is, we're much shorter and conciser in our presentations than we were a year ago. Now, the planning and zoning items are much more complex and difficult, and the presentations are designed to walk through. We can continue to make that effort, but we have, we have tried to make the presentations much more briefer, and council comes prepared with their questions. And it's just a work in progress. We can continue to try to do that.
Okay, do you have what you need from us, or were we not clear enough?
May I?
Why don't you summarize it, and then we'll see if we get heads.
So I would propose bringing a calendar, an adjustment to our 2018 calendar item next week, which would adjust all of our meetings. It would, it would give us that public notice from 5:30 to 6:15 with a break till 6:30. Those would be devoted, we believe, to comprehensive transportation plan, work session updates. And then cancel the November 20th meeting and add a special work session from four to six prior to the December 11th meeting, so that you could act on that, and that would become part of our calendar that the public is aware of.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson, okay.
So I guess I'm asking for consensus that that's okay with.
Okay, just go ahead and give a little wave, and yes, you've indicated that the 11th is a real problem for you. Is the 11th a real problem for anyone else?
I would try my best to get off by four. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can, I can do my best to try to get off at four, but it may be that I'm here at 4:30 or something, but I'll do my best to try to get here, so I'm good.
And you, I'm sure you've seen in minutes, we'll start the meeting. If there's a quorum, we're going to show you us coming in, when you come in, or leaving when you're leaving. But thank you for that. Just quick, this is for you to take home. On the other side, looking at the holidays is potential, we've had a holiday event for the last several years. I'm proposing something a little bit different this year, which would be a floating reception, where we could invite our advisory board and committee members. Erin and I spoke, she had done some survey with them. We've got, I'll say, a majority of people that are interested in a social gathering and nothing else. They don't want to make presentations, they don't want to talk to each other right now. So Erin's got some ideas about ways to do that. We could invite some of our neighboring communities, the school board, the county commissioners, there will have been an election. And I've given you some dates that at least I've identified that there's either no conflict with other celebrations and things that I'm aware of, that you are or are going to get invited, or that we could have one of our advisory committee meetings, have some fun instead of their meeting. So if you could just check your calendars, and by next Tuesday, just sort of let me know which and all of these dates might work for you to do that, then the staff could start working on that. And then we are already working on our annual town council retreat. If we follow our pattern, we would be local. We've done it a variety of things, so if you could check your calendars from Friday to Sunday, and we pick the last two weekends in January and the first in February, that's Ben when we've met in the past, and tell me which of those work for you, and/or if you have a priority of those, that we could work on that.
The Steelers are in the Super Bowl.
Unless you're sending me to the Super Bowl on your dollar, I will be here.
Was there anything else from staff, Town Manager? Okay, we don't generally do council comments or anything, but did anyone have any other questions, or were you good? Councilmember Wendell?
Just wanted to say happy bosses' day.
Saying happy bosses' day, seven times.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, well.
I did get a, I got a card today, I was very pleased.
I'd like to thank staff and council. This is 8:45, we're getting out at a good time. I entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. It's 8:47 PM. Thank you all.